Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council, which because of Labor Day holiday is being held this Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. It is after 7:30 PM. The next regular meeting will be Monday, September 17th, 2019. If you would, Mr. Paolo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bestancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Everyone's here. We do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and now I would ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hope everyone had a good Labor Day weekend. It's always a harsh reality coming off of three days off to start your Monday on Tuesday. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th, 2019 council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor of approving the August 19th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes will be approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Hopefully you had a good Labor Day holiday and look forward to what you have to offer tonight.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate it. Members of City Council, welcome back again. Nice to see everybody. Actually, quite a few things to report since last we were together. About a week and a half ago, on Thursday night, we got double booked for a couple meetings. One group on Mel Lane had asked if I would come out and visit with them about the development that has gone through the preliminary plan review at our planning commission and talked about that and then some water issues that they have and that have been there truly ever since they annexed into the city, but they're starting to back up a little bit. So I ended up going to that meeting that night, and Mr. Myers was there and also Mr. Silvestri were both there, representing City Council there. And it was a good meeting, a lot of good information, and we are going to do some surveying and some things to hopefully look at the water issue and see if there is any recourse to helping that situation. Now, the development is just going through the normal motions of a development in Worcester, and it has gone through the preliminary at the planning commission. Now, we'll still have to come through a final plan before anything could happen, and that's probably not going to happen until next year sometime. But at the same evening, we were asked to come to the fair because they had a sort of a donor event to open up the new event center down there. So Joel went down there for me, and I'll let him tell you what he found at that gathering. So Joel, you want to take it for a second?
Yeah, it was very well attended. It's a really, really nice facility. If anyone hasn't had a chance to be in there yet, you know, the council had authorized some money towards the public improvements adjacent to the site, and we did sidewalk from Columbus Avenue, Vanover up to Gate 1, the main gate there, and then we did sidewalk on the other end of Vanover from the gate around the corner there to the crosswalk that goes over towards Chicago there. There were a lot of people parked over there. So they were very thankful for that, appreciative of us getting that done, getting them before the fair. They were a little nervous about the grit, but that did get done as well with our project. So they were just, they were very appreciative, and I expressed to them how thankful we are to have such a facility, you know, right in our town, you know, the foremost agricultural area in the state, and looking forward to see that facility utilized, not just for the fair, but for other events. Yeah, one other item, slightly different note. We'll be starting next week on our, I believe it's our fourth Worcester Citizens Academy. We take citizens and interested parties through all the operations of the city, starting out with, you know, our charter form of government and all the way down to how we, you know, clean ditches and how we treat water, and we've had about 20 or so participants each time, and so we've been through that. And we're starting our fourth one here next week, next Wednesday, and have another 20 people signed up for that, or for that, or managers are participating in that as well. So another way to engage our citizens and let them know what we do and get feedback from them as well.
Thank you, Joel. Since last we talked, we did get some RFPs submitted for the Horn Nursing Home Prospect. There were two that came in by Friday, the end of business on Friday, so that was the time limit that would be. We feel that both are good possibilities, both representing good projects. We're doing a vetting of the bids right now or the RFPs to make sure that everybody was comparing apples to apples in what they were proposing and stuff. So we'll be notifying people. Really, it's the two CICs, the Worcester Growth Corporation and the Wayne County CICs that are together in this. So we'll be notifying them here this week, and once these both have vetted through the process correctly, then we'll be getting information out to everybody at that point. But we do have two very, very good candidates, and I think we'll have somebody to be a development partner in that position if everything moves through the process correctly. We also had something happen in our city that doesn't happen very often, and thankfully so, and I'll ask Matt Fisher to explain that, but we had two police officers that sort of got into a situation that could have gone very bad. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. You might have seen Channel 5 came down and covered the story, but so Officer Hall and Officer Burnett had gone to a house on Monterey to serve an arrest warrant and got invited into the house, and a couple individuals were in there, and one came up from the basement, was acting very nervous, and they approached him, identified him, asked for consent to search his backpack, which he granted, found a handgun in his backpack. Convicted felon, weapons owner disability, not allowed to have that. As soon as they found that, get him hooked up, get him outside. One cruiser is at the house, the other cruiser is just down the street a little ways. They're going to take him from this cruiser to this cruiser to take him down to the jail. The two officers get in the car, put him in the backseat, of course, pat him down. As they get in the car and start down the road, they hear this individual say from the backseat, "Oh my God, I'm gonna die," and there's this puff of white smoke or white dust. At that point, stop the car, get out, get him out. He's reached down the inside of the back of his pants. I won't go into detail as to where, but you can figure it out. Pulled the baggie out, got it ripped open, and released this powder in the car. At that point, the officer say, "Hey, what kind of feeling?" Donnie Hall described, "Hey, my toes are tingling, my feet feel weird." The officers on scene called a squad right away, get squads there, basically get them out of their vests, the gear they have on, get them to the hospital. They end up having to basically be decontaminated at the hospital. If you don't know, the hospital does have a room, it's an empty room with a drain in the floor, and take the hose to them. Basically hose them down. We have to hose all their gear down. We called Medway out, full SCBA suits to test what was in the car. All our initial tests came back negative. Came back negative for heroin, fentanyl, came back negative for everything. Those samples we were able to collect, we talked to BCI, got a rush on. They actually brought a chemist in over the weekend for us to test that, which we're very thankful to them for, and it did in fact test positive for fentanyl. So we're happy to report the officers are fine. The suspect is fine. The car will have to be decontaminated. They're supposed to come down tomorrow to decontaminate the car. The initial quote I have is $1,900 to decontaminate the car, to get everything out of it. But it's, we're grateful and thankful that everybody's okay, and we're thankful to everybody that came and helped that night to Worcester Hospital, Medway, and all those folks. Suspect still will have his day in court, but that's to come.
Glad everybody's okay.
Us too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt, and then to Donnie Hall and Dustin Barnett, were the two officers. You know, if that would have been car fentanyl or something, that really could have gone very bad very quickly. So it's something we don't deal with often, and we're thankful for that and thankful for the expertise of our whole team, PD and FD and hospital and Medway and the whole crew working together. Just a couple of things left. Andre passed out a six-month prospectus to you. Good numbers in there, so hopefully you can take a look at that, and if you have any questions, please let us know or let Andre know. He's the master behind the numbers on stuff, so I just wanted to point that out. And last Friday, we were again recognized as a community, and really, it was a high honor for us, but the Ohio State University Board of Trustees held a meeting here in the city of Worcester. It was out at the Arboretum there, at the Seacrest Arboretum at the OARDC, and they were here for the whole morning, toured the facility. Tim Smucker is president of the board at this point in time, and so they met there and held their normal meeting and then went over to Smucker's and then toured their facility. But they really believe Worcester is the second campus of Ohio State University is the way they always are referring to it now. So the main campus is in Columbus, but as far as the second campus and probably the, one of the largest acreage campuses is right here in our city of Worcester. So again, a very nice honor, and I think they are poised to do some great things here on the Worcester campus from everything I've been informed of in the background conversations. So we look forward to working together with the Ohio State University and OARDC in the coming years. That's everything then, Mr. Byten dyke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions and no communications from the public. We did have a committee meeting before tonight's meeting. It was chaired by Mr. Myers as Chair of the Public Health and Leisure Committee. Would you like to give a brief summary, please?
Thank you, President Byten dyke. Yeah, David Griffith was here this evening. He talked about his neighborhood community over on Buckeye Street and some of the activities and things that they have done over the last number of years to really bring that community together. He's a very passionate man, and he had a lot of great ideas and suggestions on how we could build our community through one neighborhood at a time. It was great having him here. We look forward to working with him and potentially implementing those ideas. It takes somebody that actually lives in the neighborhood, so it's kind of incumbent upon each of us to go to our neighbors and see if we can put together some relationships in our neighborhoods, as David had pointed out. But it was grateful to have him here. He did an excellent job of sharing with us what he has accomplished and what actually his neighborhood has accomplished. He's quick to say that it was not just himself, it was a community. But it was nice to have him here. If anyone has any further questions about that this evening, you can see me afterwards, and we appreciate having him here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers, like I said, no public hearings, so, and we have no unfinished business. So everything's new business tonight. First item on under new business is the first reading of Resolution Number 2019-43. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. This is something that's prepared by the county, but I think my reading of the requirements is we should have three readings unless the rules are suspended. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will ask Mr. Paolo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-043. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
As Mr. Byten dyke noted, this is an annual event that we have to conclude by mid-month, so we'll keep this on first reading this evening, but please be prepared on the next session to vote on the approval. Reference Schedule A attached. It's the summary of amounts required from general property tax approved by the Budget Commission and county tax auditor's estimate tax rates. Of our 5.8% millage, you can see the distribution, 5.2%, $2 million, $2,1,700 goes to the general fund, 168,900 to the fireman's fund, 168,900 to the police pension fund. So very straightforward. If you have any questions, you can forward those to Mr. Doherty, and he can respond, but standard operating procedure on an annual basis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. We'll consider Resolution Number 2019-43 as having its first reading. Turning then to Resolution Number 2019-44. It'll be presented by Mr. Bestancic. It is also slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Paolo, please read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-044. A resolution declaring it necessary to improve the streetscape along Liberty Street from Market Street East to the First Alley, the Southwest Quad, the Southeast Quad, and the area along Liberty Street west of Market Street, South Side to the First Alley, and to determine assessments for affected property owners and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bestancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. The state of Ohio requires us to do a statement of necessity any time a project will involve assessments to a property owner, and this is what this, and this is for the, this is in regards to the Streetscape Project Phase Two. If we look under Section Three of the resolution, it tells you exactly what this does. Section Three says, "This council finds and determines that, one, the improvement is conducive to the public health, convenience, and welfare of this city and its inhabitants; and, number two, the lots and lands to be assessed as described in Section Four below are specifically benefited by this improvement." And the type of, what we're looking for is some assessments on, it'd be some business owners for some property directly in front of their businesses. The assessment that they would be responsible for do not include any of the large public areas in the Streetscape project, but only what they own directly in front. And the total assessment value was, it comes to about 7% of the improvement, of what the improvement would be costing us, just directly in front of their property. It wouldn't be, like I said before, it's not for the whole project as a whole. Other than that, I've had some requests to keep this on first reading because of the assessments involved, and I would like to do that at this time, but if there are any questions, Roger, do you need, do you want to add anything to this?
Well, this is Phase Two of the Streetscape Project, and we are, we're asking to assess just the linear portion of the sidewalks in front of the businesses. Like Bill said, all the public areas of the city will take care of that, so this is just the linear sidewalks in front of the businesses.
And again, the assessment value would just be 7% of the total. No one likes to pay assessments, I know, but it is, the city could have assessed for the whole amount if it chose to do so for one.
Actually, the original Streetscape project budget, or assessed 30% of the project, so typically our previous assessments on like the road projects have been anywhere from 8% to 17%. So now we're just, we're asking for 7%.
Was there an assessment on the Northeast Quad when we did that?
There was not.
Okay.
We considered that primarily a public space since we completely redid it. You know, we took out the parking lot, we took out all curves and set it up so that could all be closed off and just be a public space and a park, if you will, for various events. So in that case, we just did, you know, we did that as part of that public space there. I will say, so we have been discussing this at Main Street, obviously, and with the various members, business owners downtown that have been a part of that. We reached out to them as well and shared all the information that you have with those property owners that are going to be affected by that. We had a meeting with them last week and discussed it. Not all were able to come, so we sent out the information to everybody. We had a couple more come in this morning, actually, and we discussed it with them this morning. For the most part, we had a pretty good response. I know there were some concerns raised about access during construction and scheduling, and so we, even at that meeting, we started making notes about specific construction notes and phasing so that we could have as minimal impact as we possibly can during construction, things like only doing certain pieces at certain times, leaving, you know, half of parking lots open, maintaining access to doors and things like that. We know it's going to be a disruption. You know, at least one of the ones that we met with said that, yes, it's going to be a disruption, and while I don't necessarily, you know, it's not the happiest thing to pay in assessment, I do see the value in it, and I've already seen the value from the other improvements that we have done, so they were thankful for that. You know, most of them said the bigger issue for them is minimizing lost revenue from doing business, that we're going to do everything we can to make sure or limit that. You know, we'll avoid events, we'll, things that are important and that down there. The other thing to note is the resolution of necessity just initiates us moving forward with the project, calculating assessments. So if you were to, whenever you approve this, if you approve it, we then calculate the assessments, the official assessments. We send those to all the property owners, just so they're aware of what they are. At that point, they have the opportunity to lodge an objection. If they lodge an objection, at that point, only is one objection. At that point, then we are required by law to convene an equalization board, and we've been through this many, many times over the years, and many of you have been involved in that, three disinterested, you know, property holders in town. We hold that equalization board meeting, they listen to all of those objections. That board then evaluates those, they make recommendations, if any, for reducing or adjusting assessments, and then they present that report to City Council. City Council would then vote to, you know, approve the recommendations of the equalization board. Once that happens, then we can move forward, and you see another request to authorize advertising an award of that project at a later date. Then we go through and do the project. When the project is over with sometime at the end of next year, we recalculate the final numbers. We are not allowed by law, if the numbers come in higher than what we estimated, we eat the difference. If the numbers come in lower than what we estimated, then we share the savings with each of the property owners. So sometime towards the end of next year, they would get the official assessment notice. Then they would have whatever timeframe we decide to give them, 60, 90 days, to pay all or a piece of the assessment, whatever they so choose, or none of it. Whatever is not paid, then we certify that to the county auditor, and it goes on to their taxes for the next year. So assessments wouldn't even be seen until sometime when they get their bill in 2022, because we'll, or 2021, end of '21, which I don't know if they get the bill till the end of that year. So, and just to give you an example, with the calculation, we took the lowest common denominator of minimal, of the front footage cost to apply to everyone. Somebody with 20 feet of frontage, if they paid nothing now and paid it in their taxes, would pay somewhere between $35 and $45 a month, or, you know, just under $400 to maybe $460 or so dollars a year for somebody with 20 foot of frontage, which is about an average of a lot of these businesses there, just to give you an idea of the range of what that would be.
And I believe they're allowed 15 years to pay for that on their.
Typically, we do 15 or 20, you know, something less than the useful life. We would want it to be paid for, you know, by the time, before the useful life of it is. And then whatever the interest would go to Andre, he goes, here's the current interest rate at the time, and those numbers, by the way, I gave you were using 6%. It probably won't be that. We just picked a number, a high number, but it'll be whatever the going rate is at the time, because we're basically acting as the bank at that point, so.
Just a quick question. Say it comes out at 5%, are they locked in for the 5% for the entire time? It won't change for them?
Once we certify.
It doesn't change on them?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd just like to ask the city if this is approved and no objections hold up the process any further. Just ask for very thorough communication of the timeline, because I know that for some of these downtown business owners, it'll be really important that they can plan ahead and make sure that they don't have much of a loss of income if possible.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Our goal would be to try to eventually get to the point of bidding this out before the end of the year and take advantage of getting into the contractor's schedule and telling them, you have till, whatever that end date is, probably before Worcester Fest of next year to get it done. That lets them put it in their schedule, and hopefully we get the best bids at that point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Because this involves assessments, I think I'd like to keep this on first reading and give the public some more time to comment, and take this up again next meeting.
All right. We'll consider Resolution Number 2019-44 as having its first reading. Now we turn to Resolution Number 2019-45. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and it is a budgeted matter, but I think because time is of the essence, that's why they're asking to not have to go out to bid, because it needs to be done right away, but we'll hear more from Mr. Silvestri. Before I get to you, Mr. Silvestri, I will ask Mr. Paolo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-045. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an emergency repair contract for the Henry Street Lift Station rehabilitation project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as we've seen, the first two items on our agenda this evening have not been of an urgent nature, and it's my opinion that this is of an urgent nature, as the President of Council referenced earlier. I want to thank Mr. Coy, our Water Utilities Manager, for being here this evening, make you aware of the Henry Street Lift Station. So what we like to try to do is have wastewater be gravity-driven all the way down to our plant, but there are times when we have to pump it up in order to get it up over a hump, if you will, in order to get it down to the station to be reclaimed at this point. That's how we do it, and we have a pretty state-of-the-art facility down there, as our administrator referenced in recent meetings, that actually generates power off of the gases that come off of that. Suffice it to say that in this lift station, we had done some maintenance. They pulled one of the submersible pumps inside one of the large pipes and were able to replace it, but there was some damage to the pipe, and then they tried to replace a second pump that needed replaced as well. And unfortunately, that one was so lodged that they felt any additional pulling on that pump may cause severe damage and totally put the lift station out of commission. So we're pretty much in an emergency mode there, and there are processes in place by which they can reroute the wastewater on an emergency basis, but it would require a pump to run 24/7 in order to do that. This particular lift station doesn't operate at capacity on a regular, normal basis, but with the fare and just the additional traffic in our area, and with that being such a critical time for this area, we definitely wanted to get it fixed before that. So like I said, we are in an emergency So like I said, we are in an emergency mode. This would involve new pipe, new pumps, basically new components for the whole lift station. And after speaking with Mr. Coy, I know the, we want to go with a supplier who's familiar with our needs and who's done these for us before, and I believe we have a very competitive rate to get that repaired, and that's why that's in front of you for this emergency repair this evening. If there are any specific questions, Nathan is in the audience to answer those. And I will be asking to put this, let's see, because it's budgeted, I don't believe I have to do three readings, so I would move for adoption this evening.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Coy, David brought up an important fact, that the fare is just around the corner. Is this something that you can guarantee will be completed in time for that?
No, some of our action, when we, with the station in the condition that it's in, we kind of pulled back and said, let's stop because we're going to make it worse, and then we would have to set up permanent bypass pumping, so we've kind of hunted for the moment. So we wouldn't have that out there with traffic and everything with the fare. So we're in the process now, we're actually meeting this week and next week with the contractor. We do have quotes from two different vendors on pump packages, so as soon as we get the thumbs up, we're going to get moving on, so.
Okay.
We're trying to minimize the potential for disruption. Usually in these situations, well, it's time for brains instead of bronch, we didn't want to go ripping anything else and making it worse, so we just tend to stop there. So in our research, too, the components that are at the station now, it's my understanding that were replaced around the time of the flood in '69.
Mm-hmm.
So being that this is sewage-related, all the pipe and valves are actually in the pit, and that's where we're seeing the corrosion, where we just can't pull anything out. So in order to do it right, we have to set up bypass pumping and take everything.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
We're also going to be upgrading the power to the station, right? From two-phase to three-phase?
That's correct. The pumps that we have there now are on a single-phase system like you would have at your house. That has some issues with pump operation, but we're going to upgrade this to three-phase. It's available there. It's an $8,000 cost to make that change, but we're bringing up the standards with this pump.
Hey, what precisely is this pump station located?
Yeah, Henry Street, the corner of Henry and Columbus.
Okay.
South of Liberty, I guess, is that right? Next section down, the corner, it's kind of, you look for an area where it's mounted up, that's where the station is.
It's north of Henry, between Henry and the railroad tracks for, and then would be east of Columbus Avenue. It's really just like a cement vault, is what you would see on the ground, with maybe a stack, a small stack sticking up out of it. So most people don't realize it's there.
It would be on the right, coming up off the highway, right? Before you even make the turn to go up toward Liberty on Columbus.
Yeah.
Okay. If you take the three-south exit and run it north up into the city.
Okay.
Is it prone to flooding there?
I think it was. I think with the flood that happened in '69, I think that's where everything was brought up, and with engineering, that's where we were looking, can we eliminate this and try and make it gravity? And we were talking a difference of five feet. That's only the height that we have to lift there. So I think it was built up over time, so, yeah, at least to my knowledge.
So if it was right after '69, it would make it almost, what, 50 years old?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it's served us well.
That's right, and there were thoughts and plans to do this in 2020, so I think estimates and timing this up were pretty close, so.
I have one more question, and this is probably something that, maybe it's obvious, but the fairgrounds is county land. Do they, are they on city water still, the public restrooms that are used at the fairgrounds? They are?
Yeah, we just went through last week doing multiple sampling and tests and getting everything ready to go, so, yeah.
And so there's no worry with the rerouting that you're talking about doing, that it'll handle the capacity?
No, the only thing would be, I understand there's parking and traffic issues there, and that's why we didn't want to set up a sewage bypass pump, just.
Okay.
With pedestrians that aren't normally in that area, so.
Thank you.
I guess we've had a motion to adopt in a second. No further questions then? Then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-45 passes, brings us to our last piece of legislation. Resolution Number 2019-46, I hope that Mr. Silvestri can explain that this is not a piece of exercise-y equipment, which, but it's not clear in the narrative with this. Then again, is that a BW shirt I see?
Yeah.
That explains a lot of things, but before I get to Mr. Silvestri, and I'll point out, this is budgeted as well, I'll have Mr. Apollo read the title, if she would, please.
Resolution Number 2019-046, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to purchase a new chassis and exercising skid valve in accordance with the capital plan for 2019.
Take it away, Mr. Silvestri. I'm anxious to hear your explanation of what this is all about.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, to reference what President Biden Dyke just mentioned, just like you need exercise, so do our water valves in our water system of our city. And you've probably seen during, over the summer, we exercise, for example, fire hydrant valves in a similar fashion, but this particular piece of equipment is for the valves in our water system. So water main, and I believe even main to lateral, is that correct? So those are the types of valves that need exercised, and so we've had this unit on this truck since 2005. It has 87,705 miles on it, 763 hours, and it, I'm sorry, it is a 2005, it was purchased by us in 2008, and it's done nearly 5,000 valves, so we've gone and worked the valve opening and closing to make sure that those valves don't seize up, because if we have a line break in our water system, we want to be able to get there and contain it and shut off, shut off the valves necessary right away. We don't want it to be stuck. So I tell my kids at my garden hose spigot out in my backyard, you open it all the way and you turn it back a quarter turn, because I don't want that valve to get stuck either, okay? So a little, that's free, free home-use advice with a reference to what we're looking at here this evening. So this unit, it also includes a vacuum unit, so we can also clean, clean things out as well. So it has been working for us for over 10 years. It does need replaced, and it is included in our budget for this year. I would like to suspend, I would like to move for adoption on this this evening.
Motion to adopt is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Questions, comments? Mr. Coy, do you have your own special exercise tape to use when you're exercising the valves there?
I'll tell you, the beauty of this machine, we'll go back to brains and bronch, sometimes when exercising these valves, in some communities, we'll see people out on the T panel and cheater bars and grim men. What this does, we can do it slow in specific torque levels to not break the valve, you know? So we're in a position, once you get these exercised and moved on a frequent basis when you need them, they'll actually work. And in the process, if we find one that's not performing the way we should, we can fix it on our time. So that's kind of the commitment with this. I'll at least throw out to part of the EPA, I guess, new rules in 2018, part of asset management plans that communities now have to do. One of the facets of this program is a valve exercising program. So congratulations, you've been doing it for 10 years, you're ahead of the curve, you've already gone through a machine that has had a nice service life, we're at the point to replace it, and that's what this is for.
Are all these valves on some sort of schedule?
Yeah, so what we're doing now, so the goal is to exercise everything, every valve, 5,000 plus. The goal is to get them all done in a four-year cycle. So what our crew has done, split the town in four quadrants, and they're working through the quadrants each year, and that's what we're doing. So it's one of those weekly tasks as assigned and get the crew out and get them.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-46 passes, brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start with Mr. Myers, since he had his public, or not, but his infrastructure, Health and Leisure Committee for that.
Thank you. I did want to thank David Griffith for coming, and again, his enthusiasm was quite notable as he gave his talk about what he has going on in his neighborhood with his neighbors and friends. I'd also thank all the others in the public who came this evening. It's always great to see folks come to meetings and participate. I want to mention, I did attend the meeting with the folks on Mel Lane, with Mayor Brenneman and our engineer, Roger. I think it was a great meeting for those people to have an opportunity to talk about some of their concerns, and I want to commend Mayor Brenneman and Mr. Kobolarsik on how they handled themselves. I thought they did a very nice job of representing us at that meeting, and thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I too wanted to thank the members of the public who have come to the meeting. It's great to have people interested in what we do down here and interested in the well-being of our city and of your community, so, thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Cavan?
I would thank members of public that showed up as well, thank you. And Mr. Griffith, excellent, excellent presentation, a lot, a lot of good ideas floated out, a lot to think about. Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
And Mr. Ansel, we'll give you the last word.
Yes, and I'm going to elaborate and I reiterate the positive comments regarding the Buckeye Street Initiative and transformation over the last 17, 18 years that has been really spearheaded by David Griffin and the engaged neighborhoods on Buckeye Street. But I also want to highlight just briefly, we all did receive a six-month financial update on the city of Worcester, and I think it's important and compelling to share some of the top-level numbers as reported by Andre and our financial team here for the city of Worcester. All income tax categories are higher than prior year. Business, all business is prospering in Worcester, which is indicated by the net profit category and the withholding category. The withholding category alone is up 3.7% to prior year. That's significant, because that represents 79% of the total income tax receipts. Overall, city revenues are up 10.2% to prior year, and those are contributed or attributed to income tax receipts, interest income, and miscellaneous revenues. And then finally, as we continue to run true for the city of Worcester, our expenditures against budget are about 2.4% below prior year. And we always gain a little momentum toward the end of the year, so that number traditionally will even be improved upon. So great fiscal control by the administration and council, and the good news is, our rainy day fund now is 222 days, and that is a good position to be in. Most cities our size, larger and smaller, would be very envious of that position. So it's a combination of many things, but we have a vibrant, financially sound, economically solid city, and it shows in all of the numbers as reported through the first six months of this year. So let's keep up the positive momentum, and this will be, this promises to be a great year, and we're positioned well for 2020. Thank you. That's all I have. I would motion to adjourn.
Thank you for your motion to adjourn, Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri?
Everyone.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.